This is the three most prestigious. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCready.
Yes.
Ms. Cool. Mr. Brown.
President.
Ms. Tuck. Mr. Huffman.
President.
Mr. Rexro.
Here.
Mr. Wropowski.
Here.
Ms. Daley.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
President. The City Council of Parkersburg conducts its legislative meetings using Robert's Rules of Order, West Virginia Code, and City Charter. Parkersburg City Council by properly noticing and public vote recently revised the meeting rules related to public comment in these meetings. These changes included the implementation of topic-based limitations and an expanded time for comment on legislative matters pertaining to the agenda. City Council has always conducted its meetings in a manner that encourages respectful communication, absent of disruption, and encourage civil and appropriate discourse. The purpose of our meetings is to conduct the legislative business of the city, including appropriations and legislative to operate the city and provide services to residents and property owners. As City Council President, I have the responsibility to conduct meetings in a manner that is within the boundaries and rules established in the previous mention of governance, documents, and guidelines. As we proceed this evening, I would like to ask speakers and attendees to conduct themselves within the following council rules. Keep comments to matters that are germane to tonight's agenda. Each speaker will have four minutes to speak. Public forum will be forty minutes in length. For those in the audience, I respectfully ask there be no disrespectful behaviors, including no cheering, clapping, or speaking out of turn. Failure to abide by these rules may result in removal of certain persons or all persons present in the chambers to afford council the ability to conduct its business. Thank you. Council, you have the minutes of the April eighth meeting. If you have presented to you, do you have any additions or corrections?
Yes, sir. Those will be available May thirteenth.
Mr. President, I just wanted to notice that they were not requested, but they will be at the May thirteenth meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I just had the one day, so we'll do it thirteenth.
So who minis to approve? Can I?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, to receive and file, we have a motion to receive and file and approve the state auditor's approval of the levy.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool.
Need to receive file and approve the levy estimate for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Thanks. Is there anyone in the audience that has proposed to lay the levy rates as proposed? Here we go. Madam clerk, the vote, please.
Mr. McCready.
Yes.
Ms. Cool.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Tuck.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Rexro.
Yes.
Mr. Wropowski.
Yes.
Ms. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes. Do we have any reports from standing or special committees tonight?
And right before that, if you have a motion to lay the levy rates.
Mr. President. Mr. Rexro, we need to lay the levy rates.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to lay the levy rates. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam clerk.
Mr. McCready.
Yes.
Ms. Cool.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Tuck. Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Rexro.
Yes.
Mr. Wropowski.
Yes.
Ms. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes. Do we have any reports from standing or special committees tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to public forum. We'll call public forum open. Each speaker that signed up with a clerk will get four minutes to speak. Our public forum is forty minutes in length. Public forum is now open.
We have about a dozen. First one is Nancy Wilcox, Sixteenth Avenue, followed by Dan Stevens.
Nancy, use your microphone.
Sit. Is it on? On the bottom, maybe. Yes.
It's been a while.
Don't we do that?
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Wilcox. I'm at Southwood Park. And I want to ask each and every one of the council members to vote not to move what they're calling the event tent from Southwood Park. That's not a tent. It's a protection for that stage here. That was purchased by the Al Smith family and the city did it after. That's why that is called Al Smith's Day. I personally volunteer for my entertainment once a month decided Southwood for the months of June, July, August, and September. Free of any cost to the city, a private park, other than the price of the separate cause of monkey deaths. This canopy was founded and donated to Southwood Park by Al Smith family. That's why it's named Al Smith's Day. The city workers did it after, under the supervision of Steve Cox while I was on council. And I commend them on the great work they did. There is no reason to move that out of there. And when we were on council, we finally started using it there. And I've been sick for several years now, and I'm better. And I'm, you know, I believe that it could go back like it was when we first started it. We might have had fifty people in the union, which we had probably three hundred. The two three year olds in town, Levitts and another one, came and handed out bottled water when it was hot. But that canopy was put over that stage so that anything that goes on that stage is protected from the water and the heat of the evening, so that nothing can be going on. I've already had five people contact me, the table come and perform at that at no cost. So everybody's upset about moving it. That's all we're doing is asking, please don't move it out there. We worked really hard to get that forgiven. And I want to thank you very much for your consideration on the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Stevens, followed by Sharon Lynch.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to the City Council, to the Council President as well as the mayor, and also Connie is always great to help the senior. Concerning the boundaries of Southwood Park for bird sanctuary, I just want to say that's a wonderful idea. I think that's a great idea. So I want to thank you for that. And I'm not sure who all was part of that planning, but I think that you all should credit for that. I think the second thing is the relocation of the event tent. And I understand some of the things that Nancy just said, but there's a new design for the amphitheater. For the last six years, they haven't really been using the event there because one of the reasons is because of the lack of attendance. And secondly is that nobody wants to sit there because of the heat and the direct sunlight. And so if I understand correctly, the addition is going to be kind of like an amphitheater dug into the hill. It'll be a better change of... I personally, I think that'll be more user-friendly. And I think we could get some concerts and talked about the possibility of having some summer concerts and stuff like that. So thank you. Thank you for that. I want to say that I think in this matter and these other matters, it's a tough job. Getting your focus on essential services. I know there's a lot of voices out there that want you to get off this essential services and do this and do that. And certainly, but there are a silent majority, I want to tell you, of folks that are in this community that are very pleased the direction that the city is going. And it's not part of the, with the public forums allowed, so I will not say anything more. Other than the fact, I'm really excited about the things that are taking place. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Sharon Lynch, Neo Street, followed by Brian Hayden.
I'm Sharon Lynch. I live at twenty-one, twenty-three, Seventeen Neo Street. And I'm here to talk about the music in the park and the bird sanctuary. And I appreciate what the gentleman who informed me was saying, that it must not be in Southside. In fact, I was down at the sanctuary last night and it's a mess. It's filthy. There's probably ten, twelve cats running free. And if you clean it up, that's okay. We can do that. But it hasn't been used for the last few years, so I'm sure it hasn't gotten any attention. The canopy was designated by Al Smith family. There is a sign that says Al Smith's Stage. And Al was very good at helping out. I've had a lot of people calling me and telling me they hope we did this. Now, I've talked with Dan McCready and Roger. And I understand that there is a plan to build a new area for music. And I think that's great. That's super. And I asked, when's it going to be done? Yeah, I was told maybe one, two years. Okay, can't wait. But until then, Nancy and I want to do music in the park in Southwood. It's been missing for a few years. The people want it back. We're both going to be able to have the time to do it. We've got bands calling to volunteer. I've had no negativity from the people that used it before. We did have a... When we first started, it wasn't very well-used, but when it got started, it was very well-used. And so I hope that you all will vote not to give the convention euro, the canopy. If they want one, let them buy it. If they want one, let them wait one year, because that's what it's going to take. Had to raise a lot of money back when we started this and it wasn't through the city. And it can be done. It can be done. And I appreciate you. We can have your all's vote. You're voting for Southside. That's what you're doing. You're not just voting for me. You're not just voting for Nancy. You're voting for the majority of people in South Parkersburg. And I hope that, I hope that you will vote to let us keep it at least one year until you get your other one built. And then I think the new one will be great. I'd love to see a picture of it. I wish it, you know, it had been put out for people to see. So if I could have a copy of it, I'd love it. I'll support it. But in the meantime, we have people in Southside that want it now. And we're willing to do that. It'll cost you nothing. And so please consider that when you vote tonight. And I appreciate it if you do, and the people in Southside will appreciate it if you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brian Hayden, Thirty-first Street, followed by Elisha Sebold, Abbey Village.
Previous protocol will be observed. One resolution tonight seeks to designate a portion of Southwood Park as a bird sanctuary. The resolution states that the area shall remain undisturbed except the bird habitat is approved by the Director of Public Works. When I first read this, I was interested, believing that Parkersburg was acting progressively in a greed-based legislation. A healthy community benefits from a healthy ecosystem. However, when I reviewed the Parkersburg codified ordinances, it arose from ordinance zero dash one four zero zero, Act eight twenty-three of two thousand and eleven, resulting in codified ordinance five zero five dot two one, City Designated Evention Bird Sanctuary. Section A, the city is hereby designated and declared to be a bird sanctuary. Section D, no person shall trap, hunt, shoot, molest, and so on and so forth, to deer hunting. In simple terms, for almost a quarter of a century, the entirety of Parkersburg has been a bird sanctuary. All lanes, public and private. This includes Southwood Park. I tried to reserve judgment until such times I could learn more about this plan. I hope that the city had intended to make a bird preserve, a managed land that would be promoted to use efficiency for native and migratory birds while facilitating healthy bird habitats. This would include a comprehensive plan to deal with the feral and domestic feline problem that we have. Otherwise, this appears to be a completely redundant and inefficient waste of time and effort. The answers to my hopes about progressive action were dashed in the Parkersburg News and Sentinel. To quote the propaganda from the built sponsor, "It is just going to be a relaxing, appealing place for anyone who wants to go up there and walk or just sit up there and relax." I am aghast at the lack of competence in bringing this resolution before the council. I could not imagine that any committee would have done the due diligence or not done the due diligence of basic research. I looked for evidence that a meeting had been held on this subject and found none. This resolution was derived as an official act of two or more officials intent to conduct public business, and the discussions assuredly have complied with the Open Meetings Act. Councilpersons should know by now how to navigate their way through the submission process. If this reckless concept had been brought to public review and commentary, I suspect that these embarrassing shortcomings would have been noticed. Engaging the residents of Parkersburg for advice and input is the definition of representation and is not an act to be admonished. Now, tonight, council body will have time, will have to consider bringing a motion to vote and potentially voting on this resolution. I offer a caveat. The representative body of this council must consider that if this agenda item does not receive support, there may be, there may be another petulant reaction from a councilperson. However, if a councilperson does make a motion, another to second, supporting this superfluous and gratuitous resolution, I suggest that the public will judge your capitulation accordingly. As tonight, I have quoted codified ordinances in this event to provide information to the council and the public at large. I insist on reminding all that truth that is spoken cannot be called slander and a truth that is written cannot be libelous. Honest criticism is not defamatory by nature.
Next, we have Elisha Sebold, Abbey Village, Route forty-seven.
I'm having trouble locating the exact address for Elisha Sebold at the Village Room.
All right. Hello, City Council. My name is Elisha and I'm resident of Parkersburg. I'm here tonight to speak on something that is truly urgent. A crisis that demands our immediate attention. The issue is plaguing the people of Parkersburg and keeping us up all night. Birds. Because apparently that's the emergency. We're talking about building a bird sanctuary. Because nothing says we care about our community like creating luxury housing for ducks, pigeons, jays, whatever kind of birds, Cardinals. We have human beings sleeping under our bridges. Parkersburg is bleeding, and people are out here flapping their wings over feathers. West Virginia still leads the nation in overdose deaths. Fourteen hundred lives lost in twenty twenty-three. But sure, let's, let's make sure that the mallowes have a safe place. Families are struggling to survive, but at least the birds will have a nice view. And when people try to speak up with the real issues, they get shut down. They've cut public forum. They're ending meetings early. They're silencing people for saying a council member's name, as if accountability is something more intensive than suffering in our streets. First Amendment doesn't come with the feelings clause. Supreme Court said Rosenberg versus Rektor nineteen ninety-five government cannot silence speech just because it makes them uncomfortable. It's called viewpoint discrimination. It's unconstitutional. West Virginia's Open Governmental Proceedings Acts, West Virginia Code six nine, six dash nine eight, transparency, demands transparency, transparency, not tangents. Ending the meeting early to avoid criticism isn't leadership. It's cowardice with a gavel. ACLU, ACLU of West Virginia recently said it best. For thicker skin, the right to criticize government is fundamental. You were elected to guard your reputation or curate applause. You were elected to serve the people, all of us, even the ones who make you squirm. So go ahead, build the bird sanctuary. Beat the ducks, fluff the feathers, but who's really caring about the humans?
Katie Hornbeck, Ridge Street.
Madam clerk, what was the name again? I'm sorry.
Katie Hornbeck, Ridge Street, followed by Beth Dennison.
Hi, my name is Katie. I am a member of the Parkersburg community. And I would like to say, as much as I love birds, along with other animals, I think that's an awesome idea. I think a sanctuary for birds would be amazing if it weren't for the real issue we have at hand. That issue being real human people who are sleeping on the streets with no form of protection and shelter due to upcoming bird sanctuaries and things of that nature.
Beth Dennison, Sayore Avenue, followed by Renee Ingram, Third Street.
Thanks, Beth. And I'm here tonight to address you on Agenda Item Number Six. Message from the executive. As the members of the City Council of Parkersburg each swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, one of the most important and fundamental rights enshrined is the First Amendment and said the Constitution is the principle of free speech and the right to petition the government for the redress in grievances. By the action of the majority of the council, you acted in direct opposition to this fundamental right. President Abraham Lincoln said, excuse me, "Those who deny freedom to others deserve it not to themselves and under a just God cannot long retain it." So by severely restricting the rights of the public to address you regarding their concerns, while also removing the opportunity for our representatives to do so in our stead, you've decided how to allow the mayor to enjoy that right all along despite his history of showing contempt for many of the city's residents. By doing so, you've elevated his voice above all the city's residents and you're owed to that of the constituents. This is shameful. In the words of Winston Churchill, "Some people's idea of free speech is that they are free to say what they like, but if anyone says anything back, it is an outrage." Freedom of speech is not only one person. Is it actually freedom of speech at all? Please do better. Thank you for your work.
Next, we have Renee Ingram, Ridge Street, followed by Trish Pritchard.
First off, Mr. President, I believe the Lou. Lived in South Parkersburg the biggest part of my life. As I've gotten older, my priorities for entertainment have changed. That being said, Shanglin City Councilwoman District Two, Sharon Cool, for taking yet another source of entertainment from South Parkersburg. Yes, District Two has a new pool, new pond, a new slide. All of that only because City Park got a new splash pad and pool that is going to be getting refurbished this summer. Tennis courts are a shamble.
Ma'am, are you, talk about something on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, let's keep it germane to what's on the agenda tonight.
Not to mention a new pavilion. I would think there were enough artists in this area that a handful of first aid units could be filled with proper planning was done for the canopy at Southwood Park. I believe it was offered that somebody was going to take over the planning of that. Why, if it is going to be moved, why is it not going to be moved to Hoy Park? To keep it in the city instead of giving it, donating it to the Parkersburg Convention and Visitors Bureau. However, City Council District Five, Zach Kaufman, and the Convention Bureau, thank you for relocating the event tent to my current district. I look forward to some great views coming to down, venues coming to downtown. I'm certainly glad to see that the event tent that is finally being put to good use after it being sitting for at least six or so years. I'm glad to see planning saw positive outcome for District Two. I also have heard from a little bluebird in town that the Parkersburg News and Sentinel was sought after to reply or to take notice of what is being done here at City Council. The Lou.
Next, we have Trish Pritchard, West Virginia Avenue.
Thank you. I'm here to discuss, oh, thank you very much for the four minutes of time. I appreciate that. And I'd also like, before I get started, to thank Ryan Barber for hosting the Housing Forum next week. It's Tuesday, the twenty-second, from one to three, and I appreciate him doing that. Because I'm here to talk about Resolution Three. The resolution, amending the Community Development Block Grant Program Annual Action Plan, uh, wants to move funds from the Community Health Center to residential assisted demolition program, uh, in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sponsored by Council Mendele, Cool, and, uh, Burkowski. Building up is always better than tearing down. In the twenty twenty-three annual report, a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars helped fund repairs for thirteen homes. I believe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is better spent building our community up. Let's repair another thirteen homes. Funding minor home repairs reduces the need for funding more demolition, and the Down Payment Assistance Program gives our neighbors a chance to own a home. Please amend the resolution to move a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the minor home repairs in that item. There are already way too many vacant lots from demolition and a lack of affordable housing, especially in District Four. Sadly, District Four's important voice for these issues has been silenced. Committee assignments were not on the agenda last week, but were announced with an email, then were discussed via newspaper today, and still on the agenda tonight. Our city needs leadership, a leader who's not afraid of a strong voice fighting for her district. Our city needs a leader, not a petty little man.
Central Avenue.
Lady, can you repeat that name?
Jamie McCormick, Central Avenue.
Good evening, my name is Jamie McCormick, and I've lived in District Nine for five years. Uh, today for once, my trash was picked up, so thank you guys for that, I don't know what's going on now, but thank you. I'm, I'm here to talk about the bird sanctuary. Um, I'm still trying to figure out why, in the middle of everything the city is facing, we're still talking about the bird sanctuaries. With all due respect, what are we doing? People in the city are frustrated. I think Facebook told us that today. They're tired of broken promises, the aging infrastructures, a lack of opportunity, rising crime, a constant, the constant excuses, and while folks are packing up and leaving the city faster than anything, and you're focused on birds. Let me be clear, we need more council members like Todd, Puffman, Rex Ray, and Daley, so thank you. People who actually listen, who show, who show empathy, and who understand leadership isn't about control, it's about service. You can still be conservative and care about people. Those things are not mutually exclusive. I'm begging you, I'm seriously begging you to focus on what matters. Start investing in economic development, bringing in real opportunities, help rebuild this city in a way that makes people want to stay and not run from it, like I did in twenty ten. Because this isn't about budgets and meetings, it's about our neighbors, our families, our futures, and Parkersburg deserves better, and we're watching. Thank you.
Next, we have, this is the last one, Brett Solans, Nicely Avenue. Brett Solans, if you will, yes. So we got to all of them.
Thank you, Madam clerk.
This is fine, isn't it?
Just pull it up.
I was gonna say, this is fine, isn't it? Bird sanctuaries and stuff, we all know birds ain't real. They're all government dramas. They're just here to watch us make sure we stay silent, to save the young. I think this is all just a goddamn joke. In the name of, uh, what, Hawaiian versus California, fuck all y'all.
That's all they have, sir.
Fuck your hotline, too, over there.
Is that all, Madam clerk?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll have a public forum declare presence here, and we'll move on to messages for the end.
Yes, I've got a few things, Mr. President. Thank you. First, Connie has a proclamation, and if there's any representatives from Discovery, Discovery World here, ask them to come to the front podium at this time, please, and Connie, I'll let you go ahead.
Whereas Emily Calandrelli is a nationally recognized science communicator, engineer, author, spaceflight participant, and television presenter, who has inspired a generation of young people, especially girls, to explore the worlds of science, technology, engineering, and other matters. And whereas Emily is a proud native of Morgantown, West Virginia, and a graduate of West Virginia University, where she earned a degree in mechanical and aerospace engineering before continuing her education at MIT. Whereas Emily's achievements serve as a shining example of what West Virginians can accomplish, and her work continues to break down barriers and promote equity in STEM education. Whereas Discovery World or Market will host Emily Calandrelli at the Parkersburg Arts Center on Saturday, May the third, for a sold-out event welcoming nearly five hundred attendees from our community and beyond to learn, explore, and be inspired. And whereas the city of Parkersburg recognizes the importance of fostering curiosity, imagination, and a love of science in young minds, and celebrates those like Emily who make it their mission to spark that wonder. Now, therefore, Mayor Joyce of the City of Parkersburg does hereby proclaim Saturday, May the third, as Emily Calandrelli Day in the City of Parkersburg, and encourages all citizens to join in celebrating her contributions to education, science, and the empowerment of future generations.
Thank you. Mr. President, I've got a couple of items. Uh, because, uh, I want to read a couple of emails. This first one's kind of long, good to be short. Good afternoon, Mayor, I'd like to share how the twenty twenty-five fishing derby turned out at Southwood Park, it was fantastic, not one in twenty, we had over two hundred fifty participants, including their families, had hot dogs, chips, donuts, and coffee. I didn't know they had donuts, sorry, I probably stuffed one. Hot chocolate and soda pop for very little fee. I helped with volunteering, I had the opportunity to talk to so many participants, so many shared they grew up participating in the derby. This was a generational event for them, time for families to spend quality time together. They expressed that they are happy to see the park being new and updated items. The new wall was a hit, there was a lot of positivity about how parents didn't worry about their little ones falling in, how it was nice to set poles on them, the design complemented the pond, and it was safe for all. There were no points of problems with casting or wheeling in, I believe that's reeling in, Mr. Richard, is that correct? Can you wheel? For getting tangled in the wall, the wall's period ideal investment in Parkersburg, stop football team, special thanks to them, I'd like to thank them myself, too, along with their coach, for also helping, they were helping kids, even with fishing items. Their interactions with the younger children were so great to see, Texas Firdaus gave away peanuts, and threw kids a coupon. The chili day did not stop us from having a good time. All those eagerly awaited to hear their name and receive their certificate. I personally burnt my twelve-year-old nephew, and his comic was, this was the best one in three years, we fished until three thirty, and we returned Sunday morning for a few more hours. Team that put the Derby together did a super job, their goal was to give the children a wonderful experience, change for families, spend time together, keep the fun, they met their goals with excellence. Our community thanks you, along with our City Council, Parks, and Recreation, for committing to, committing to improve our own park. Maybe I'll compliment leadership, fishing, etc. We give our children the opportunity to enjoy them for a lifetime of memories. I'm a big fan of fishing, I think fishing is a lifetime sport. As a fifteen-year-old, morbidly obese person with a lot of joint problems, I can still fish. I can't wrestle or play football anymore, but I can still fish. There's another one from a gentleman, something, I don't know if it's a man or woman, G-Go Rank, "Love the new wall at Southwood Park, but can we get the sidewalk replaced soon? It no longer matches. Thanks for all the good fish, it was fun for me and the others in my group." Uh, we are gonna put a new ADA sidewalk at Southwood, I think that's gonna go out the coming months, um, we'll succeed in refunding for an ADA improvement to that sidewalk over there. There's another one, "I took my two grandchildren and one nephew to Southwood Fishing Derby Saturday, it was wonderful, and I thank, thank you and the people for their work to make the area both safe and clean from the pool construction. Very pleased with the new wall, it's much better than before. Kids caught fish each, and we took them for dinner, thanks again for our work itself, and safer, better for the young people." And gentlemen, and filters. So I just wanted to share that, we appreciate the working and recreation information at the Subcommittee with regards to the fishing derby, and Ms. Cool's been actively involved in that for a number of years. I don't know, especially I want to thank Everett and the Street Department. So, you know, there is a one point two million dollar construction project going on at Southwood, and there's a lot of concern. How many have fish, or how many have fish, it's amazing what a dump truck works for gravel, and about three ball fails astray will do, and some construction things to make it safe and accessible. So I was a little concerned myself, but I knew it would go well, and then it didn't rain on the day of the event, so that helped a lot with regards to the mud. The next item I want to talk about is the city audit, I think Eric has some handouts. Do you have a handout, Eric? City of Parkersburg received an unmodified audit opinion from fiscal year ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Additionally, for the sixth, the second year, no findings or other items requiring corrective action noted on financial state of the program. Additionally, the city's financial position continues to improve from prudent financial measures such as opposing the work of police and fire pension plans and retention of operating reserves. Overall, the city's total net position, which is the sum of all assets less liabilities for all funds, has improved from a deficit of sixty-three million, seven hundred, two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars as of June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, to a surplus of only ten million, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The city has realized a surplus of twenty-six million dollars, twenty-six point one million of fund balance is invested in capital assets for governmental enterprise fund operations. Conversion of the total net position deficit, the surplus, represents an improvement of seventy-three point eight billion from fiscal year twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. Um, you know, this, uh, I did a press release, and I think something solid, I don't know if they put it in the paper or not, I'm sure they did. But, you know, I have to thank, uh, first and foremost, Eric for his diligence, but really all the department heads that I've had the pleasure to work with the last eight years, because Eric, um, you know, really holds her feet to the fire, that, uh, with regards to procurement, budgetary discipline, and those kind of things, but, uh, they also have to comply, and, um, you know, sometimes that's not always the easiest, it's not always the simplest thing to do, it's the right thing to do. And I applaud, uh, not just Eric and the other department heads, but I applaud all of you and the fifteen other council folks that I've worked with over the last eight years to put the city on a much better course of, um, fiscal responsibility, to say that. So, uh, the next thing I want to talk about is, um, the, with regards to the homeless coordinators. So Chief Board gave this report, uh, in January with regards to the previous quarter. Um, so I wanted to, uh, and, and I'm doing this for a couple of reasons. Number one, um, council asked for it, what are we, what are the homeless coordinators going to be here by, I don't know, so, so, um, Chief gave it last time, I'm gonna give you some updates this through around. Our two homeless coordinators engaged with forty-seven persons, contacted and offered assistance and services. Three subjects accepted assistance for addiction treatment, nine accepted assistance for, for help with, uh, housing, seventeen were voluntarily reunified with family or to locations in which they had a foundation for better success. Six were assisted with attending lodging and a purchase remission, five were assisted with retaining lodging at Salvation Army. Some notable locations were to include Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Salt Lake City, Utah, San Diego, California, Henrico, or Enrico, California, Auckland, New Zealand, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Columbus, Indiana. Um, I think this is important for a couple of, uh, couple of reasons. There was a, a town hall meeting, um, last week, that, um, there were some allegations, there were some, some comments made that the homeless coordinators, uh, we never see them, we don't know what they're doing, it's made up, whatever. Um, I think this, these numbers, uh, illustrate that they do, and I will say this again, I said it last time, and I mean this wholeheartedly, and I'm not trying to pick a fight with anybody in the audience or anything else. Our coordinators in this program is very different than what a lot of outreach agencies are doing. You're not gonna see the city of Parkersburg's homeless outreach coordinators passing out food or showing up in a soup kitchen. They engage and, they engage individuals and offer them the assistance that's out there. And like I said, forty-seven individuals, three accepted some help with regards to the treatment program, nine with housing, seventeen were reunified, uh, six were assisted with lodging for purchase remission, and five with regards to the Salvation Army. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm a little disappointed because, um, you know, there was representatives from the city at that meeting, and they, they, they got this similar report in January, didn't say anything. The other thing I wanted to bring up, there was also some comments made at that meeting, that the city is responsible or complicit with regards to the recent, uh, house fires. And, uh, all I can say is that is absolute codswallop. If there's somebody out there that has proof that the, of representative of my administration or anybody on this council is, is paying people or setting vacant structures on fires, we've had nine, um, in calendar year twenty-two since the first of the year, um, these vacant house, um, uh, let us know, file a police report, there's a guy right over there who'd be more than happy to put cuffs on him. You know, I told somebody the other day, if there's any tree to that, uh, you find the tree, I got the rope. But, um, I think when those kinds of rumors and innuendo are, it's deleterious. But, um, I just think that's important to know, because this is the second time this, this information's been, been, uh, officer.
The gentleman in the hat, he needs to be removed.
So, we're speaking out. Just a couple more items.
If you can't be scrubbed.
There's due process. That's bullshit. We're speaking out, we have your mind.
Have good night.
.................. And that the mayor's talking about lynching people. That's bullshit.
Okay, have a good night.
I apologize if, if, I apologize if my colloquialism offended any of you, but, uh, I, 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 just a couple more things. There's, is a lot of money spent on, on, with regards to outreach, and there's not a lot of money being spent by the city. There's, there's millions of dollars being spent in this community, state, federal, for this population, for millions. Um, I just, with regards to, um, Resolution Number One, I'll go with Number One first, um, the bird sanctuary, one thousand percent, and I want this burned in real good. This was my idea. You know, this costs the city nothing, to designate space to keep it natural. Bird sanctuary, maybe we could have called it natural space, green space, um, you know, it's heavily wooded, it is primary focus with regards to Southwood Park is to navigate waters from that part of South Parkersburg down into the retention pond that is Southwood Park, uh, Southwood Pond, so that is a thousand percent my idea. I think it's important that it remain undisturbed and unconstruted upon, and I say that, he's not here tonight, after multiple conversations with our city attorney. We gotta quit building stuff up in that hole. All right, it's needed to properly drain, we gotta make, and we've done some of that, I think, you know, it's still pretty ugly right now because the grass hasn't grown in, but it's really, that's, so that was my idea, let's try and put something on the books to keep it natural and undisturbed so that the next mayor or the next city council can say, I want to build something up there. That just creates problems down the road. So if you don't like the bird sanctuary idea, you can blame me one hundred percent. With regards to the Resolution Number Two, um, as related to the tent, I, I brought with me a copy of a letter that I received, and it is undated, I'm gonna say it got about six weeks ago, requesting, kindly requesting your consideration regarding the relocation of the event tent currently located at Southwood Park. Would like to prepare that the tent be moved to the back parking lot of our Welcome Center on one thirteen Anne Street as a permanent location, and this change would greatly benefit our organization as we hope to utilize the tent for various community and tourist-related events. We believe this relocation will help us create an excellent addition to the city's event instructor and will provide a versatile and accessible venue for the community. Thank you for your time and consideration, and for your response. So just some data on the, the CDB Welcome Center. They booked eleven thousand visitors last year, it is growing all the time, and thirty thousand visitors, um, to the, visited the island last year. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I love the island, I don't go as much, it is our number one tourist destination, or number four, number one tourist attraction. There are folks working on it, I think, uh, Wendy Shriver would like to, 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 to be the number one tourist destination, but, you know, she's got some years to go before, you know, um, she can make that claim. There were tides down there, this, you know, this was, you know, he sent the letter, I pitched it out to council, I think everyone's sponsored the resolution, and this does not transfer ownership. Mr. Myers, I'm gonna ask you, this does not transfer ownership, this is just kind of official blessing. a official blessing, correct? The way you wrote this resolution?
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's kind of the background on some of that stuff. Um, and I believe, Mr. President, I have, um, I believe I've copied or, uh, covered everything that I wish to cover this evening. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, we need all the resolution number one, please.
A resolution designated boundaries at Southwood Park as the Bird Sanctuary. I have a question.
Um, let's get a motion in a second. Mrs. Cole?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Dr. Daley, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question in reference to just some of the public comment. In Mr. Anderson's may be directed playing. If it was already designated a bird sanctuary, does changing the language to it make a difference? I just see if there.
I, I don't believe it does. I, I think, uh, you know, again, the purpose of this is to get something on the books that says it again, and, and maybe this is short sighted or a problem, if it is, you know, it may be. But I just know when folks see woods in a park, they say, "We gotta build something there, we gotta have something there, we gotta, you know, we gotta build something in there and make it usable." What's wrong? You don't know anybody that loves hanging out in the woods more than I do. Um, you know, it's an, it's an old growth forest, for lack of a better term. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a lot of old trees, a lot of limbs on the ground, um, you know, a- again, its primary function, from a functionality standpoint, is to get water from Highland Avenue and all the way to Blizzard, ba- basically from Parkersburg South High School to get, to help that water get into what was built as, I mean, Southwood Park, it's a wonderful pond, I mean, you heard, but it was built for stormwater, that's, that's why it was there. Um, and, you know, I just, you know, like I said, Bird Sanctuary, I know, I'll, I'll call out Mr. McCready, he's already got a line on birdhouses. He's got, I saw some blue birdhouses. I just, you know, I think to, to, to make it to where you can't just come in and say, "I wanna build this here." There's been, you know, um, you know, we, you can't put a playground in the woods, you can't build another swimming pool up there, we don't need a pond, although when it rains really hard, if we don't keep that area clean, we can't pond on it. That, that's, I mean, I don't think this legislation does anything other than designate that we're gonna keep this area natural and free from construction for the time.
So, this resolution does that even though it's a redundant resolution?
I don't think it's redundant. I, I'll agree or disagree. The gentleman commented. I mean, uh, Blaine, I don't wanna speak for you, but passing this res- resolution or not passing it doesn't change anything other than if there's something on the books that says we're not gonna build it and keep it natural.
It doesn't change any existing ordinance.
Do we have any further questions regarding resolution number one?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cole?
I just asked like one, there's been, um, several people getting up and speaking about cats up there, I'm putting a bird sanctuary in, I have been working on that situation, and I am hoping that within the next few weeks, we do not have any cats at Southwood. I've been working with people that I've been feeding them, uh, we came up with some plans for it, and I'm hoping that within the next few weeks, there's 12 cats. Out of the 12 cats, four have been spayed or neutered, I mean, eight have been spayed or neutered, there's four left, and, um, we have, I have been working with them. There's four people that are actually coming with the cats, I have spoken to every one of them, we're coming up with a plan, hoping within the next couple of weeks, they will be gone, safely gone, safely gone.
Do we have any further questions from council, resolution number one?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a comment on these, uh, cats. I'm sorry. Here, I was, it was too long ago, my son and I had a couple of pets with some neighbors, uh, flower beds, and so, we have a heart attack, very commonly different to the, uh...
Southwood Park?
No, actually, we did, we took them up to the, uh, shelter, animal shelter, but it paid 40,000 for the cats, and they said they were, and they had cats, and they were probably about, they tried to get people off the curvy, they asked for others, but there's, uh, we do have a patch on itself on itself. Anybody else on council have a question?
Here you go. Madam Clerk, the resolution number one, please.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexro?
Yes.
Mr. Volkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, the resolution passes. Number two, please.
A resolution authorizing the relocation of the event tent at Southwood Park to be relocated to a rear parking lot at our Welcome Center at 113 Ann Street.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cole?
Need for adoption of the resolution?
We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cole?
Just a couple of things that I'd like to clarify. Number one, when I first came on council for two years, there wasn't the experience at the park, my first and second year, and it was handled by Art's Bridge. They were more than happy to do it. However, in the beginning of the third year, they also did the one at City Park. Beginning of the third year, they decided there was not enough people coming over, I mean, I gave them all of who to call for donations and all of that. They decided there was not enough people coming, it was too hot because it's stepping the asphalt, there's basically nowhere to sit, that the tenants started sliding off, and that they were gonna concentrate all their time on the city park, which did do a great job at the city park. I personally could not do it because I'm a city council member, um, because I could not hold the money and pay the people, that ritual was illegal. So, for six years, that park, that van shelter has sat there, and not one person has came forward to wanna do anything with six years. This is the second year. Now, obviously, everyone's jumping bandwagon. Number two, what happened in that six years, it became a catch-up. They started feeding cats there, and there used to be 30 cats there, and there's not 30 now, there's down to 12. Like I said, I'm getting that taken care of. Um, no one had more respect for Al Smith than I did. Al Smith and I was best friends, even though he was a Democrat, I was a Republican. We still, we were best friends, it shows your parties do go along. Um, before we even considered, and the mayor couldn't vouch for the illness, to take the tent from the van shelter, he said, "What about Al Smith's family?" And I said, "I will get with Valerie, which is his daughter, and let me find out if she's gonna give her blessing on this before we do anything." Am I correct, Mayor?
That's my understanding.
So, I contacted Valerie, I told her what we wanted to do. She gave her blessing on it. She said, "Southwood is growing, Southwood is looking beautiful, it is Al Smith's stage, but everything in Southwood," according to her, she said, quote unquote, "needs to be made out of Smith. If this is gonna help the convention here, if this is going to help the tourism, and it's gonna help Parkersburg, we are all for it." So, we got her blessing. So, this is nothing that I am voting for that did not, number one, have the blessing of Al Smith's daughter. And, um, Valerie works sufficiently, there'll be also another lady, which I also do that. So, six years, nothing, no music, no one wanted to do anything, and then all of a sudden, we got the blessing of Al Smith's daughter, and we wanna do this to the convention here to help them out, to bring more, uh, the convention here will have a place, you know, a covered place, and now a music series wants to be brought back. We're gonna build an amphitheater, it will be built, the picture's in, it's a plan for the 2016, 2030 plan, I believe it is.
It's the Capitol.
The Capitol Infrastructure Plan. The picture is in that, it's ridiculously beautiful, we will have a place for a music series, hopefully, this will be built before the mayor leaves office. We are definitely working on it, and it will be a place for music. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Nick.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Huffman?
Um, I just wanna say, I love anytime anybody wants to help work with Downtown PKB a lot, and we're always trying to come up with events, so, very happy that people are stepping up and trying to bring something, you know, for people to enjoy. Um, these events bring economic development, these events, uh, keep kids out of trouble. So, whatever the situation may have been before, I'd just like to propose an amendment. I would like to keep the stage there this summer and see how things go, and then we can reevaluate things next year if no concert comes to be.
Okay, we have amendment to keep the stage there for one year. Do we have any questions upon the amendment? Here, Madam Clerk, can we get the vote on the amendment, please?
Mr. McCready?
Yo.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
No.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexro?
Yes.
Mr. Volkowski?
No.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
No, amendment fails. Back to the original resolution?
Mr. McCready?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to make sure nobody on council had any further questions on the original resolution. Here, Madam Clerk, the vote?
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Huffman?
No.
Mr. Rexro?
No.
Mr. Volkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, resolution passes. Number three, please.
A resolution amending the Community Development Block Grant Program Annual Action Plan, moving funds from a community health center to residential assisted demolition program,
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cole?
Need for adoption of the resolution?
Second. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions on resolution number three?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cole?
I have two questions. I have a question. It was brought up in public forum tonight that we should not move the money to the RAG program, basically, that we should put it towards the minor home repair program. That is not what these monies are used for, am I correct? We cannot use up for that?
CBG money can remain in the minor home repair program, it can be.
It can be?
The, the minor home repair program is sufficiently funded, it's fine.
Okay, how much money do we have in the minor home repair program right now?
270,000.
And how many applications do you get, basically? I mean, I'm not gonna put you on the spot or hold you to it.
We have approximately 75 applications in queue currently.
75 applications, and are we able to fulfill all of those applications with monies?
Um, the, the funding that we have within our budget struggle, you know, since 2020 with COVID, uh, contractor availability, material costs, uh, demand has risen since then, and that doesn't catch up sufficiently. So, the, so the demand is greater than our, you know, what we're able to produce currently.
Okay, and we're unable to produce that because of?
Primarily contractor availability and the rising costs.
And that's nothing to do with how much money we have in the program?
The program is, you know, the, the activity is sufficiently funded.
Okay, thank you. And the, by moving this to the, um, RAG program, am I correct? That's what we're, we're going to be moving this to? An average demolition cost, how much?
$7 a square foot, we're seeing anywhere from $5,000 to $12,000 per residential structure.
Okay, and all of this money will be used for residential, and we move it to that?
It's, it's the, it's the residential assisted demolition program, it's 100% voluntary initiative. The biggest difference you see with the RAG program is that liens that are placed on the property for the cost of the demolition are ultimately deferred and forgiven. So, the biggest, uh, benefit of the RAG program, in my opinion, is that it allows for future redevelopment on these parcels. So, nine out of 10 vacant lots you see around town have a lien associated with that property. Reinvesting and redeveloping these vacant lots, there is an additional barrier to redevelopment that you have to satisfy that lien. So, paying $7,000 to $12,000 to satisfy that lien makes redevelopment a challenge, and that's why I think the RAG program is, is really different.
Okay, and how many applications, basically, are you, you can get in the RAG program?
The, the RAG is relatively new, we currently have 22 applications, um, submitted, uh, we've processed five recently, um, since we've had a transition from the DEA funding to the CBG sources, uh, we have now, it's about $20,000, um, so that'll be, you know, expanded in other days.
So, basically, we have 20 applications, okay, and basically, nine times out of 10, they're all approved anyway, they do get approval, somewhat?
Potentially, so we'll do title payments to make sure there's no other standing, uh, encumbrances on those, on the lanes.
So, let's say, let's say that we get 10 more, and we don't have enough money in the RAG program to pay for it?
Well, we already don't for the number of applications we have, yeah.
Exactly, yes, okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Nick, if I may, um, I, I, Ryan, I wanted to ask mine, 'cause I, I had it in the head of my head, um, repair stuff. There are a lot of challenges with the home repair program, um, you know, Ryan kindly referred to it as contractor availability, these are federal dollars. So, it's, it's, it's not as simple as, here's a contract, here you go, there's gotta be a government. A lot of our contractors, unfortunately, they don't wanna jump through the years. Is that an accurate statement? Um, you know, Ryan has been a director now for like three years, four years? Four years, I mean, he has had numerous meetings with these folks, um, but it's, it's, because it is a federal program, um, there's a lot of hoops to come through. So, that's one of the many challenges, um, there, and quite frankly, um, you know, just that being said, but I wanna speak a minute, in a moment, about the residential assisted demolition. I lost track, but we're probably getting close to 500 demolitions since I've been mayor. And, um, I know, I know there are people who don't like it, and I know we disagree, we can ice it and fix the repair, but I, I can honestly say this, um, no adjoining property owner, neighbor, business owner in the vicinity of these demos has ever called me to complain about why you tore that house down. We tore one down today under emergency provision, it was a fire early this morning. Engineer turned, deemed it to be unsafe, need to come down immediately. And I went out and did a little, little press, actually did two press events today, that's a lot, I don't do a lot of press, but, um, two of the neighbors, man, that's awesome, thanks, you know, um, so, I, I understand that, you know, these, these houses, and I, and I say this too, I don't believe we, we, we've paid for a demo, be it through this program, DEA demolition lien, URA of a house, that that wasn't the best solution. You know, when, when, when houses, like, when today was fire damaged, had a second fire chief or third fire? Second, second fire chief, it had burnt once before, um, his guys are so good, they got there before it was a total loss, and they must have been, you know, just a little slow getting out of rush. So, so demolition, I, I, I get it, and a lot of folks say, "Who's gonna build back?" I can't answer that, but, um, you just drive, you know, I was over in District 4 today, you know, Lynch Street, you know, that, that, that structure across from the vacant parking lot, that structure was a problem, a big problem. It's gone. Now, unfortunately, it's taken down under emergency procedures too because of, of a fire, but, um, so, you know, unfortunately, when it comes to us, we can't go out and fix houses that we don't own, we can't sell houses that we don't own, and nobody can do that without a clean a clean title unless you wanna end up in a George, uh, orange jumpsuit. So unfortunately, this, uh, the remedy of demolition is oftentimes the only real remedy to have. And this program, to Ryan's point, is voluntary. You know, this isn't, uh, you know, they don't have to come and plead their case in front of the voting enforcement agency. Some of you have been to D E A meetings. Um, they maintain the property around us for two years. They keep the lot mode. Or redevelopment, that lien goes away. Now, that's a deal of a century, uh, if you think about it. You know, we're gonna tear your house down for you. And if you maintain the law, you know, just moat, basically, right? Um, or if someone doesn't wanna build back, that, you gotta, you basically got a free demo. Now, make no mistake, most of the demolitions that the city executes end up being free because we rarely have ever recouped any of that cost. Very, very seldom. I mean, probably two or three times a year, if that. It's very rare. So I encourage the council to adopt a resolution to give you some money. And it's, um, willing proper owners to get the slum of white clear, to get them a pack to, to have an unconstructed or cleared title. Um, we're simply just firing up the lawn mower once a month, keeping it mowed.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any other questions about resolution number three? Council? Here, Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Resolution passes. Ordinance on first reading, please.
An ordinance amending Article 1358.09, private outdoor designated areas, to expand the time to be all year round in Article 1358.02. That includes definitions, 1358.04, participation.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cole?
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions on the ordinance's first reading?
I have a question.
Mr. Brown?
If we're going to let these people go to Knight Street, Knight Market, down to Leonard House and get another drink, and they get down to the street, the light, they're, they cannot cross because they stop. Cars come down on the hill. And that person, that will finish, wrong, gets hit by a car. What's gonna happen to the driver? Because he's, uh, now, if he's drunk, then he's got DUIs. It doesn't really matter. But if the guy is sober, and hits the, the guy staggered, that's another, you're having another can of worms. If they wanna drink, let them drink with the rack. They don't need to be drinking and walking down Park Street. Go, go get another beer. They've already found a place to get a beer. Uh, I think we're just having a can of worms, but we don't need to. And, uh, Ms. Lawrence, am I close? Who's gonna get sued?
Every incident that you described is fact-based. Um, sure, there's always potential lawsuits in those kinds of situations, but I wouldn't report to assume that one person would be responsible, uh, because every situation is fact-specific.
All right.
I'm sorry, I can't be more, more specific or clear than that based on a general description.
A general is, if the guy is drinking, and you're walking down the street, and he steps out in front of a car, it shouldn't be the driver's fault. That's my question.
I don't think I would assume it would be the driver's fault. Again, it would be based on the facts of the case, condition of the parties, how the driver was driving, whether the pedestrian was in a crosswalk or somewhere else. These are all variables that, uh, I wouldn't assume that any one person would be responsible.
Do we have any other questions from council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Huffman?
Um, I just wanted to say, this is certainly by no means a progressive program. This is kind of like foundational for any city that wants to have events or move forward with any, like, small businesses bars. Um, this, I, you know, work with Mr. Barber, Downtown P K B, um, and towns all over the country do this. All over Western Virginia do this. And it's very successful. It's, uh, really helpful for businesses.
Do we have any other questions from council?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Cole?
There is, uh, no one on the council who is against drinking and drunk driving. Um, when we first started the P O N A, I was very much against it. But I thought, okay, we're gonna help drive down. So I've had a touch down for a cam. Wanna know if there was anyone arrested, if there was any fighting, if anyone got hurt, and how many incidents there have been? Well, there's been none. There's been none. And I said, I feel that says a lot, not only for the establishments that are serving now, but also for the responsibility of the people that are drinking to walk down Martin Street. So I, I have no problem with approving this because I'm not gonna say it's not gonna happen. Uh, it can happen at any given point in time, just like someone can be filled by a drunk driver at any point in time, if I will there. But I'm willing to vote for this. If there is a really bad incident, I will bring it back before council. Hopefully, we'll do away.
Any other questions from council? Ordinance on first reading. Here, Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Ordinance on first reading passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We stand adjourned. Our next meetings in May will be on the 13th and the 27th.